Ready when you are. You're all set? Okay, thank you. Okay, good evening and welcome to the September 25th Town Council meeting. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item for discussion is Discussion of Converse Middle School Reuse 24 Converse Street.
I did not get a chance to read this. I think it came just before three o'clock this afternoon or two thirty this afternoon.
Yes, I'm in the same boat, so.
Yep, I did not either.
Okay, want to reschedule?
I won't be here for two weeks, so.
Well, I had, I had a busy day today, so I didn't see any emails either, but I did look at the the first iteration of the RFP. I don't know if it's different than what we received today. But I had taken some time, I think on Thursday, to look at what other communities have for this type of project that we're doing. And I found that East Hampton had, I think, a really comprehensive RFP that focused on housing. And what I really liked about their RFP was that it included a lot more information about Palmer as a community. Like, it incorporated housing goals. They had a housing production plan, which I don't, I don't think Palmer has yet. I think we ju- were, might be in the stage of doing a housing production plan.
We have one.
Oh, we do? Okay. I forget where we were at that, with that. But I was thinking, like, maybe if we incorporated the goals from our master plan and the housing production plan into the RFP to really set a scene for, you know, the propos- the bidders, you know, so they could have a little bit more background information on the community. I also think it would be helpful if we had, like, pictures incorporated of Converse as well as the floor plan of the building as well.
Yep, I have all that.
Okay.
I'm just curious, what's?
Good points.
I can't spit it out, so like, the plan of the community have to do what you sell on the building.
It's like selling your community so that people will bid on it? So like you, you, you like create a picture of like what the community is all about and what attributes are in the community? And then that may, might make people be interested to actually invest money here and build.
Gotcha.
Yeah, considering Converse could probably house like fifty, or I think it was fifty, sixty plus units. I think it would be, if, if I were a bidder with tens of millions of dollars that wanted to invest in a property, I think I would want to know a little bit more about the community and, you know, for the type of population that would be living in Con- in the, in these properties. Like, is the community, is the location of the school a good fit for maybe a population that doesn't have access to vehicles? Like, you know, Converse is very central to the downtown area and would be good for people who might need a bus stop or something like that. So I think incorporating that information would be really helpful.
Okay, so we want to do their homework for them.
Well, basically to entice developers to want to.
But you do have to show what we have also.
Yeah, exactly.
You know, because if you look up a house to buy, things are added to that too, you know.
Yeah, exactly. How close to the school's restaurants and what.
The school system is and all that.
You can walk right down to the local pub or food or whatever.
Gussys?
Yeah. I think I've been in there twice my whole life.
It's a good place.
It was just the last time was when the band was playing.
There you go.
Trying to find. I know it's stated that the town owned lots, most of the lots. I'm trying to find that paragraph.
Should be in the opening description, right? The general description.
Second window?
It's number two, one point two.
There it is, there it is, sorry. I don't have any problems. I thought that's, that's probably the most important was that. Not currently on the register. I didn't really have any comments. I just wanted to make sure that this wasn't like limiting. I don't want to, I personally don't think I should say anything about keep the gym or public space or anything like that.
I agree.
Let them figure that crap out.
Nope, I didn't put anything like that in there.
Yeah, no, I, I know. I'm just saying. Not with my only feedback.
Yeah, that could be the downfall of the sale too with, would you want to buy someone with their stipulations like that all around it? But that field is nice in the back.
The field is not included in this RFP.
Well, that land is not.
I think what Mark is talking about is the gym, the auditorium.
None of that stuff.
The actual building.
Right.
Right, with the money from the sale and possible tax benefit, we can always build something to replace those things.
Exactly.
What's wrong with the high school room or? What's wrong with the high school gym? Why do we want to keep this? Does it not enough room?
Well, all the basketball teams play at the same time, like basketball season is a certain time of year. So JV and high school and varsity are playing. So then the, the smaller kids play at Converse. So there wouldn't be enough availability of the courts at Palmer High.
Before the new high school was built, what did the little kids play then? Or did they just schedule it around it?
At the old high school.
Well.
Where's that?
Converse, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I know, but before the new high school was built, where did they, they play then when, you know, whatever?
They just, was that how many years ago?
I don't know.
That was a long time.
I don't think that has.
They just played at the, the old school. They might have used St. Peter and Paul's. I don't know.
I honestly, I couldn't tell you.
Across from the school there.
But I know that the, the gymnasium is, is heavily utilized and a lot of, and it's used by a lot of, a lot of kids all winter long.
But then if someone's moving in there to live, would they want to hear all that ba-boom, ba-boom?
You don't want that included. It's out.
That's what we're saying.
They're going to buy it and do whatever.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I didn't follow that. Thank, thank you.
All right, so my only question is, I mean, the RFP is pretty straightforward. I know we're going to get some proposals. I've already have, have spoken to developers that are interested in the building. They're all housing developers. Do we want to make a small committee for the evaluation of the RFPs?
Before we get to that, I, I, I just wanted to give my, just my comments on, on this. So I didn't see specifically where it jumped out at me that we were looking to sell the property. I mean, it says it's offering to sell, but then I feel like somewhere down below it said something else that kind of contradicted whether it was a straight out sell or something else. I, I know the first paragraph says that, but there was somewhere else. And then I didn't see anywhere other than in one of the, like, rating criteria that we were looking to put affordable housing. And I thought if, I, I mean, that's what we've been talking about, so I felt like that should be clearly stated.
Of the fifty-five and over?
Yeah.
It's in here somewhere.
It's in the, it's deep down in it as far as like highly advantageous for one of the, the rating requirements. But if, if we are, if we are strictly looking for over fifty-five affordable housing, then that's what we should say. And then that's the only people that would be bidding is that are putting, that, that are going to build that. As opposed to, it seemed like you were leaving it more wide open to see what we got for, for proposals.
My personal opinion on that is that there's such a housing shortage right now, why limit it to fifty-five and over? Why not just create housing, period?
I agree. If, if we're not going to limit, you know, you don't want to limit the sale because of the, the basketball place. Why limit it because you just want fifty-five and over? It, it should be, whoever wants to spend the money, come build it for whatever age group, so be it. As long as it gets done and built and it gets utilized, in, in my opinion.
Go ahead, Brian.
All right, so, so Section Three, price proposal. So there's a, there's a specific section that is just about how they're going to put in their, their proposed price for the, the property. And I've been trying to keep this language very general. The only thing in here where I really even qualified price whatsoever is when I made it its own category. And I, and I said that, you know, price is important, but it is not the sole qualifying criteria for the project. I mean, you could have somebody come in and, and offer you all the money in the world you want for the building and their plan is crap. And then you could have somebody come in and be like, look, honestly, this is what I can do with the building. But the more I pay for an acquisition cost, the less likelihood that this, this project is viable. And you got to keep in mind, interest rates are very high right now. The cost to do projects is very expensive. So I left it in there as they have to propose a price for the building. You know, I, when I issue this, I'm going to put in the appraisal that was done for the building. I'm going to also put in the market study that was done. Those are incredibly lengthy documents. I'm reasonably sure I can get all that uploaded to the different places that I got to advertise this.
So does that mean we have to come up with rating criteria for better price crappy plan?
It's all in here.
That's in here. That's what.
No, I saw.
Highly advantageous, advantageous.
So you, I question.
Still touchy feely, right? It's not quantitative.
Questioning that, Ryan, because you said it was all in Section Three, right? But there's two point two is the proposal price and non-price information and two point four says the proposed price.
Yeah.
But you said all that was stripped and put into just Section Three.
No, I didn't say that.
I could have sworn you just said it's just in Section Three.
No, I didn't.
I thought you were going to answer my question though. It had nothing to do with price.
Okay, I'm sorry. What was the question again?
Regarding not being specific as to over fifty-five housing.
Yeah.
You said, you said let me, before everyone starts talking.
Oh, I thought you meant about the price thing.
No, that wasn't on the table at that point.
Yeah, I mean, if you guys want to limit it to fifty-five housing, I'll write it in that we'll limit it to fifty-five plus housing. I mean, I kind of agreed with Matt that, I mean, but yeah, I'm fine to write it in as fifty-five plus housing if that's what everybody wants to limit it to.
I think we're just going to lose out.
Well, I think what Barbara was saying was that it should be identified earlier in the document that this is about a housing project. Not necessarily about, it, it just doesn't come until later in the document that this is a housing development project. It's.
Anybody who reads this is only going to understand this as I can submit proposals to turn Converse into housing. There's no other acceptable proposals in here. I mean, this is a pretty straightforward RFP. Yeah, everything in here talks about price, non-price information. You have to pay for the building or you have to propose a payment for the building and you have to do a housing proposal. I mean, if you guys would like specific, like big bolded all capital letters in other parts of this, I'm, I'll do that. But I guarantee you, you're going to get housing proposals.
Turn them all into suites.
I guess for me, for the fifty-five and over, which is Barb was saying, is do we just need to take a vote then to say that we want that in there or not, instead of just beating around the bush here? Because quite frankly, I think that restricts you to whether you can build it for any normal person or fifty-five and over. So I, quite frankly, would vote to just not have that language in there.
Well, it's under highly advantageous, so responded demonstrates.
Well, to set some type of direction for him, we can sit here and bounce this around the room. But unless the council steps up.
As possible, because when proposals start to come in and whether we have a committee or not, I don't want to see the goalposts moved. I don't want to see the standards change. I just want it to be clear as, as day. What the expected.
That's why I'm saying, then the council needs to step up and say, as a council, do you want that language in there, fifty-five or over or not? Plain and simple.
It's in here.
No, but what Phil is saying, shall we remove it?
But it's not saying it's only fifty-five and over.
But that's what Barb was saying, that she, she wanted that.
No, I didn't say, I, I said, well, I wasn't clear, but I was questioning, because the only discussion that I feel that we have had as a council and the discussion that we've had.
Was for fifty-five and over.
When we've had public meetings was fifty-five and over. And I think that that is diff- that's a different type of project than some other housing projects. And so I think that has to be considered. The other thing though, and I don't know if we're going to.
So real quick to, to stop you then, so then right here and now, then the council needs to decide, is that the route they want to go or not?
I don't think this.
It's not limited to that. Right.
I know, but I'm saying, do you want him to add that in there or not?
It's already.
It's in here, is what I'm saying. It's, it says, it's under.
Section two. Four point two.
Well, then why are we talking about it?
But it's not, it's not a strict.
Everything's there.
It's not a strict, okay.
Everything's there. It sounds good.
So again.
Very good. Thank you.
I feel like what's been discussed publicly and the route we're, we're potentially going are two very different things that have different outcomes potentially for a neighborhood, existing neighborhood. I also want to indicate that I did receive an email today from Bob Havelis regarding the, the RFP and him requesting, and I did not respond yet. I, I literally was home like a half an hour before I had to come here. Discussion that there are a lot of people that still want to have ideas and want to see the building turned into, you know, it's a historical building and wanting the building to be maintained and retained by the town. So I don't know if Bob was aware of, it didn't sound like he had watched the meeting to know what the price tag was. I don't want to put words in his mouth though until I actually speak to him. But I'm just letting the council know that that was a resident that reached out to me regarding the path that we're going down and concerns. There were, there was a few other people on the email. And he said there were more people than those on the email that were, you know, concerned.
That were concerned or interested in actually stepping up and doing something.
I don't know. I didn't speak to him, so.
This has been five years now.
We beat this dead horse for the rest of our lives.
Again, I'm just making you aware that an email was received for the record.
Maybe we should put out something that says the council's looking for twenty million dollars in a two and a half percent override and see how many people say, yeah, you're nate of that.
Yeah, it ain't happening.
Exactly. We all know that.
Keep smoking that stuff.
Right, well, the money's going to come from somewhere. So I mean, if the taxpayers aren't willing to pay more in taxes to cover the project, then there's something that we can't do.
It's not going to happen.
We already know that.
Right.
Let's keep going with this RFP here and get this taken care of.
Thank you, Phil.
So the other issue, well, not an issue, but, you know, I, I didn't have the ability today to, as others said, to compare like the, you sent a, a proposal or a RFP or RFQ from Auburn. I don't know, like, how that compares. I also don't know, you also sent, I don't know if it was the same draft that we already saw from like last week's meeting.
Yeah, I didn't change anything. This thing's the same.
Okay. And how did it compare to the, the proposal that you got from, did you get anything besides Auburn? Like the last meeting we talked about, like reaching out to?
I reached out, but I haven't gotten anything yet.
So the number one thing, I noticed the biggest difference with the Auburn one is that it looked like it was, the town was going to retain the property and somebody was going to rent or lease that property and develop that property.
Auburn's, I, Julia Bancroft School, I believe, was a lease to purchase.
That was first thing on the top of the header. It said that this is a rent to lease or whatever it was of town property.
Yeah, so I, I talked to, Julie Jacobson is the former town manager in Auburn. She's retired now. Oh, God bless her. And so they had this Julia Bancroft School, very, very similar to Converse. Similar size, if I remember correctly. Similar centralized location, similar, like sort of sitting there for decades or a decade or so while the community sort of spinned around it. And they had folks that wanted the town to retain it and they had folks that thought that made no sense. So they sort of, they tried to do a town project there. They, they hired the same exact architect we hired, EDM, Tim Widman. He came, did the same presentation. It would cost X, Y, and Z to put a senior center, maker space, office space, all that stuff in the school. So then they decided to do the RFP for housing or development. And they went the sort of middle ground of lease, that the community would retain the building and somebody could lease it from the town. But the town still retained ultimate ownership of the Julia Bancroft School. I have not followed through to see if they still own the building, because it might have been a lease to purchase type of thing. I can follow up on that.
Yeah, because it actually says purchase or long-term.
Yeah, purchase or long-term lease, right.
If it was a lease, just asking, who would pay for the development? The person leasing the building, right?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm. So can't imagine there.
We don't want to get, I, I don't want to.
I'm just asking.
CSB intel lease. No, I know, I'm just saying.
The first time, when we initially.
I would think it'd be them.
When we, when we initially put Converse out to bid, whatever year that was, two thousand, do you remember? What year was it?
With Housing Partners in all there? Like twenty eighteen-ish?
Twenty eighteen. Okay. We had, it was for a lease, a ninety-nine year lease.
Yeah, theirs is twenty years.
A twenty-year lease?
Upfront payment structure for twenty years.
But we, I mean, we didn't get any bids on, you know, a lease or retaining part of the, part of the building.
So one of the, the challenges, right, so I know, I definitely understand the, where everybody's upset about like the Three Rivers Grammar School and stuff like that. And those are people that paid you hard money, right? They paid you hard money for those buildings and they still did nothing with them. But some in other communities, I've written in what are called reverter clauses. But these have to be recorded at the registry and that's a problem. The benefit is if somebody doesn't do something, you get the building returned back to you. But the pro- the other, the other side of it is it's very hard for a legitimate developer to get bank financing if there's a reverter clause, because they could lose their asset.
Right, and then it's nothing for the bank.
Right.
Right.
A lease, you know, might, might not be as severe, but it's still, I mean, again, a legitimate developer that needs to go to a bank and get bank financing, that may or may not be a wrinkle. So I just want, I mean, like you said, I think the headwinds are the current interest rates and the costs of construction right now. I mean, other than that, I, I think this will be, definitely have proposals. I mean, it's going to have proposals either way. Just the conversation with any type of developer, I, I'm sure they're going to bring up the cost of doing business.
Right, and then on top of that, isn't the state giving incentives right now for housing? It's huge right now. They're doing big programs for new housing projects.
Not senior housing, mostly affordable, affordable housing.
Right.
So.
Or suites.
Sixty, eighty percent area median income.
Gotcha.
There's one thing I think we should put in here. My opinion. Don't everybody shoot me. We should allow, we should ask to have a space that's a changing room slash locker, something, facility for the fields. Not the kitchen, not all that other crap, just some type of, you know, external access place for the teams that are coming to play there.
Do we have any room over by the garages that we can put something up?
Maybe, I don't know.
I threw, make a trailer. Get a portable trailer and drop it there.
Yeah, I, should you not come to the game prepared, already changed and ready to go?
Well, now we're getting in a rabbit hole.
Just saying, if we want to be open, yeah, right, figure it out later. Never mind.
I mean, I think that, I mean, I, I think if you put something like that in the RFP, it could be a pause for developers to, again, they'd be like, well, all right, we don't know exactly the square footage that we're talking about here.
What do they, what do they want?
Whereas if you don't put that in there and you do select a, a qualified developer, that's a negotiation, a conversation you can have with them later on. And be like, hey, you know, in your project, you know, is, could we get this space? And they can be like, eh, yeah, that's something we can do, or that's one less unit.
Unless there's a rental fee with it for them.
Again?
Down the road, yeah.
That's a conversation to have with somebody else. I wouldn't preach it to anyone.
Sell it first.
Instead of the ticket booth getting into the field, you turn something in, you know.
It's kind of tight, but it should work for them. They're little people.
So what's our, what do we want to do with this? Any more discussion?
I mean, I, I think that we should be specific as to what type of housing we're looking for personally, but.
Well, it does break it down. Under that Section Four and then Two, Housing Development. It says highly advantageous would be a restriction of fifty-five plus advantageous would be a plan for developing general housing units. And then non-advantageous would be a main reuse does not demonstrate a plan for housing units. So there's three categories.
Right, and I put in, you know, that they have to, you know, meet the nature of the community, the neighborhood. Yeah, community and neighborhood support is a, is its own qual- qualitative section. The experience of the developer, right? If they've never done, you know, more than, you know, eight to ten units somewhere, that, that's pause for concern. Whereas if somebody comes in and they're like, yeah, I've built, you know, fifty units, a hundred units, whatever.
Yeah, this is a lot more detailed than the Auburn one. I just flipped through the Auburn one. Your, your criteria for highly advantageous, advantageous and non-advantageous has a lot more categories than the Auburn one did.
Yeah, I mean, I went through all of theirs and I, I'm just trying to, you know, and using my own experience, right? I've done, I don't know, three or four large housing developments, right? So I remember my conversations with all of those developers, what, what were things that, you know?
So one thing that I'm not sure, because I'm not in municipal government, is how the RFP process works. It says something about an enclosing an envelope and not having it, having it sealed and everything like that. Is there this form that they have to fill out? They literally say, housing development, this is what category I fall into. This is what category I fall into. Like, how does that work?
So an RFP is, yeah, there's two things that, that are the most important thing when doing an RFP or an invitation to bid or anything. It doesn't have to be for Converse. It doesn't have to be for housing. It could have been the fences and stuff. Is responsive and responsible. So responsible is they read the whole thing, they have the ability to do a project and they are just earnestly putting forward their proposal. They're responsible developers. Responsive means that they read this document. If I put in this document, you have to bring a Milky Wa- Milky Way candy bar to the site walk through and five developers show up, but I only have four Milky Way candy bars? One developer can just go home. Goodbye. You didn't read the document. You're not prepared.
Got it.
So, and some, and I don't, but some people do put those little tricks in their RFP.
Right.
So, yeah, the way this works is they will have to give us two clearly marked envelopes. One will be their price proposal to purchase the building and one will be their proposal for what they're going to do with the building.
Got it.
You know, I mean, you don't necessarily have to do it that way. I mean, it's clean to keep the price proposals and the, you, you typically separate the price and the proposals when you're not as concerned about the price.
Got it. So how does the comparative evaluation criteria work? Do they tell us where they fall into each category?
No, we do. And that's why it's either going to be me qualifying all of this or we're going to make a small committee. And when I mean small.
That was my question on qualification. Oh, it's in here. Well, it's not. This is very subjective.
That's what I wanted to know, right? So how do we, so we get the proposals back and then we take the comparative evaluation criteria, go through the proposal and be like, all right, these guys fit into highly advantageous, these guys fit here, fit here, fit here. So there's almost like a check sheet that you go through.
Yeah.
In each category, right. Yes, exactly. That's what I'm asking.
So you could be highly advantageous in one category and, you know.
Right, exactly. Yes, that's what I'm asking, right.
And that, and that, and actually, that's a good point. So there, that's one thing that I could. And that, and that, and actually, that's a good point. So there, that's one thing that I could go either way on changing, right? I can take out the part where they have to do the price in the, in their proposal separately, and I can just make it the price in the proposal is the same deal. I mean, price is one of the qualitative criteria. Actually, I mean, I, I sort of would rather do it that way, because it sounds like the purchase price is rather important to us.
Well, the purchase price is only rather important to us because we feel as though we've run into this issue in the past historically, where we've given a property for a dollar to a said developer, and that property is sat, or it's just been in disrepair, and we get it back, and we now have it, like, the Thorne Day School, right?
We also.
And I agree, Barb, I'm sorry, real quick, Barb was the one that actually said that, you know. If, if they're willing to develop the place and not just get it for nothing, they're, they're, they're putting some skinny into the game.
Skin in the game, right.
You know?
It'll give them more in, in, I mean, not even, I don't know how it works in the, like Phil's saying, I don't know how it works, like.
Obviously, it's not gonna be market price, but.
But if they get money, if they give money upfront, do they get it back if they develop the property? You know, that kind of thing. But, right, Barb was already shaking her head, like, I don't know how that works with the municipal side of things, right?
It works the same as, as any private development. We just have to go through more public advertising so that more people know about it. Right? In a, in a private development, you know, if you want the best proposals, you're gonna advertise it to the entire earth. But if you want certain people to bid on things, you're just gonna give it to those people.
Got it.
We don't necessarily have the ability to shepherd it to certain people. We have to advertise it to the whole earth. And our only protection is what we write here in terms of qualifying, you know, qualifying criteria. Again, the only reason you separate out the price from the qualifying criteria is if the quali, if the proposal for the building is more important than what somebody's paying for it, then you don't want your committee to be blinded by the fact that somebody offered you five million dollars for something, but they had a crappy plan, and then somebody offered you nine hundred thousand dollars for something, but they have a legitimate plan.
Right.
And, and you have the ability to, to, to look at both sides under the microscope and say, okay, look, here's this person's track record. This person's track, yeah, okay, we're gonna, we're not gonna get two hundred grand more, but we have somebody that is a five-star, this guy's gonna produce versus that person maybe will produce and get something done.
Right.
Price does matter, because we have to replace what's there.
That's gonna be, that would be the only, right, that we need to replace. Our, our reason for the price would be, hey, we need to replace the courts.
Activities and usage of the gym need to be replaced.
Would be the only main reason, Ryan, why we would ask for a certain amount of money.
Well, it matters also because you could have somebody that comes to, comes forward with a very good proposal. They, they're, they're willing to, let's say it's ten thousand dollars is what they're, right? And then, again, I consider that no skin in the game, and it's easy for them just to pay that amount and let something sit, because then they can take a loss on the building for whatever costs involved. We have that happening all over the place, right? But you could also have a proposal that is good, that someone's, I'm gonna use the million dollars I threw out last time, 'cause Ryan had said that's what the, the value of the property is, that has a good
That's what the appraisal was in twenty eighteen.
It's still, that's, that's the value right now. And so you could come in and
Is how much?
It was like a little over a million dollars was the assessed value. But what I'm saying is, so I think that matters, and I think that matters when we look at the criteria, because we don't want someone, you know, to the point of some of the neighborhood schools that were, were let go for a very small amount of money, so it didn't matter if they didn't develop them, because they didn't have a lot of, they didn't put a lot of money into it.
Right, but the way I look at it, though, that's a million dollars less that they now have to develop that property. I mean, obviously, they're gonna go out for financing and things like that, but.
But if someone, let's just use the million-dollar example, okay? So then when they go for, for state money, then that's just part of the cost of the project. So if it's gonna cost, so we had the fourteen to twenty million dollar fixing, fixing up the building costs, and then they choose the million dollars to acquire the property, that's just gonna be part of their proposal of, these are the costs that I had to incur. I had to purchase it for a million dollars, I have to spend fourteen to twenty million, whatever their number is, to fix it up. And so then they're gonna submit that proposal and see what they get back. Am I correct on that?
You need to submit that proposal to who?
To the state, she's saying.
For state money, for housing, for funding, grants.
Well, I mean, in terms of grant, I mean, I, again, I'll have to review what has come out of the new Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, and I'll reach out to Secretary Augustus to, you know, further make sure I'm not missing anything. But there's not a ton of grant money. There's no free money for housing. Everybody wants something for their money. So I did a project, and it was a subsidized affordable housing project, ninety-six units of housing, and we had to do a whole subsidy layering review, because there were so many different levels of subsidy. But one subsidy, the CHD subsidy, was for very disabled people, and it covered ninety percent of their housing costs. So it was like a super section-eight voucher. That was enough money to cover ten percent of the project. But they needed to segregate a certain number of housing units for those disabled people, and then build in the accommodations extra beyond just regular ADA for those, for, for those levels of disability.
Right.
So I'm just saying, that money wasn't free. They had to do a whole bunch of extra things, and then segregate out units that will basically be forever for disabled people.
Got it.
The only money out there that you, that I know of, that you could arguably call free is the state historic, federal historic tax credits and state historic tax credits, which are very valuable, because they, they can cover up to, like, you know, twenty-plus percent of a project. The state tax credits are very hard to get. Ninety-nine, nine point nine percent of all developers are denied on their first round. So it takes them two rounds of applications to, to even get into the mix.
Gotcha.
The federal ones are easier to get. And, you know, I, I would say that the, both of those, I, I have to remember, one of them is for four percent, and one of them are nine, and these are tax benefits, so one of them's a nine percent tax write-off, and one of them's a four percent tax write-off. I always get it backwards, which one is state and which one's federal. But those are probably incredibly attractive right now, with the current, you know, economic climate and interest rates.
Okay, if I could be the devil's advocate here, then, from listening to everything, I would suggest then, the council gives the lowest amount of price that they want that building to go for, so now he has something to go by. Okay, do we wanna accept two hundred thousand, four hundred thousand, half-market value? What are we willing to accept as the council? Because we're all here talking about what you want in all of this and everything. What is the price tag that we want to get in, in this right now?
Well, first of, first of all, we wanna discuss that in an open session.
Correct.
So we'll stop that conversation right now.
But then, that needs to be something that happens in executive session or something, whatever, then what I'm gonna say is move along from this price thing until you're willing to sit down in executive session and set a price for him to put in what we're willing to accept, you know, and nobody else knows, because it was an executive session. You know, you could stay here all night and beat this with it, and.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'd like to review the other proposal anyway, and then Jessica had made some suggestions to add a few things, so I think at a minimum.
Yeah, I was, I mean, I was gonna add photos and floor plans.
Again, to be the devil's advocate, then I would say, two or three people need to be on a small committee. You sit down, you put in what, like, you, you have a budget committee, this committee, that committee, put in, you, you had some concerns early. One thing, someone's proposal that you had read and seen, so you didn't kinda know what you want, you know what you want, Barb. And one other person, Mark, I guess I'd throw you under the bus, but whoever, somebody, somebody else that wants to do it, sit in there and, and put in what you want, and, um, let's get it rolling.
So I, yeah, I, well, I think that, again, I think that
It is my birthday.
We
Happy birthday, that's right.
When we meet in October, we can finalize this with, you know, Jessica had asked incorporating master plan product, uh, plan and housing production plan information, which, what, what, East Hampton, you said? So you could just look at East Hampton and see what they did, and then pull some information, and then, like, what photos and stuff you're, I don't know. I don't, I, I didn't look at East Hampton, so I'm gonna have to look at East Hampton and the one you sent from Auburn.
So if, if, we're not, real quick, you're gonna have like a little committee or whatever?
That would be
I would say then, you take what you would like to see in there, put it together. You take what you would like to see in there, and anyone else, what they would like to see in there, and present it to him, that, so he can incorporate it in there.
Well, I think we just, well, I think we just did that as a group, and so now he's going to do that, and then he can bring back the, the whole thing.
I'm just saying, so there's no, you know, I mean, she knows what she's looking at, she can say, hey, look, email it to him, hey, this is what I would like to see. And even though we've had the discussion, so it's on paper, and he gets to see it and get it in there, so there's no mistakes, that's all.
So I think that that's fine, but I think the committee, in my opinion, the committee would be, once the proposals are received.
Right.
And we did the same thing the last time. There was a group of councils, three, three counselors on the committee and the town manager, and then everything was reviewed, each person took the, took the proposals, independently rated the criteria, then we came together as a committee.
I forget where it was in here, but there's also where, um, they talked to them at site or whatever.
A site visit?
Uh, it was something about to, to go over their proposal. I had written here, I didn't mark it with my pen, but, um, where there was a chant. Where you actually sat and talked with them about their proposal.
Yeah, I mean, you, you, you're, you're gonna communicate with every developer once they put in proposals.
But you can do a, as part of this RFQ, you can, you could have a date cert in for a walkthrough, so everybody
Oh, I do, yeah.
That's what I'm talking about.
The, the language is in there, I mean, I have anything with a date is parenththesized out, 'cause I don't have the date. But yes, I, you have to do a site visit. I put that in an error every RFP, because that's, that's how you get rid of the gadflies, right?
But, right, and so are you going to put in there that it's a mandatory site visit?
Yes.
Okay, no, I'm just throwing that out.
I thought there was something in there, like, that's why I was
There is, I, I mean, I'll, it should be relatively beginning, because
Shame on me for not marking it.
So go on October's then to vote on this, right? Get it out the door?
Yep, I think that makes sense.
We have to commit to that.
Yes, we do, because this has to move on.
Briefing session. Okay, so the Town of Palmer will hold a pre-proposal meeting with prospective respondents to answer questions on the contents of this proposal, date, blank, blank, blank.
That's what I was talking about, that's all.
Okay, so are we good, we good on that?
Yes.
Yep.
Okay. Unless anybody had anything else?
Did not.
We're gonna be looking for a motion to go into executive session under Mass General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one, Number three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. The United Public Service Employees Union, UPS EU Local four-two-four M, DPW Administrative Unit, Contract twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five, I so declare. And we will go into executive session, and then we will not return to open session. Why would we return to open session?
I don't know. I mean, I probably just didn't take that off the agenda.
Okay, just making sure there's nothing I need to know. Okay, so, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Motion by Bob, second by Carl. Matt, how do you vote?
Yes.
Carl?
Yes.
Phil?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Good night.
Night.
Good night.